The time now is ten thirty. And I'm calling this meeting to call. I will not entertain. So I'm glad to see all of you here. And let us be a better, better and earlier morning to be with us. Now, I will entertain a motion for a motion of the gentleman.
So.
Move by Mr. Franklin, second son of five years kind of. And we are calling Chris Johnson, Jefferson. You know, remind everyone, all of, oh, all of our favor approval of gentleman, please say I.
Aye.
I'm both my folks, please say no. But gentlemen, the proof, now we're here, so.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, we have one item on the agenda, which is the fiscal twenty twenty six, ten to the budget adoption. Um, Mr. Bush.
Good morning. For President Johnson, board members, superintendent understands. Kevin.
We're shared, sorry, the screen was not being shared, yes.
Say what?
The screen was not being shared, so we're sharing the screen.
So we want to start with our vision and vision. The Pitt County School District maximizes student achievement and social emotional well-being by building a sense of community and safe, equitable learning environments. Our mission is that students are empowered to lead, learn, lead, innovate, and serve as productive, productive and caring citizens within their chosen paths of success. Um, a reminder of our four meeting leader outcomes. Uh, our main goals in the district are student achievement, staff effectiveness, and stakeholder engagement. But the ultimate goal are for the four me, four meeting leader outcomes, where our graduates will be matched and enrolled, motivated to enlist, funded for entrepreneurship, and meaningfully employed. The way we do that in our district is following our strategic map with the theory of action that if we build stakeholder engagement of student, students, parents, and staff, and community, and strengthen staff effectiveness to drive teaching and learning, we will maximize student achievement. Our agenda today is to bring, uh, back the, the budget for tentative adoption. Um, since the May fifteenth meeting into proposing the changes that have been made. We want to remind everybody of our, of our priorities this year, where they focus around our recruitment and retention capabilities. Part of this budget proposes a three percent certified increase and, uh, the implementation of a, um, classified salary schedule. We're also focused on literacy and improving, um, outcomes for our students and as it relates to, um, literacy, um, by supporting, uh, those efforts. Third, we have attendance as a, um, concern all over the state, not just in our district. That is also a focus of, um, our priorities this year. And lastly, continuing to build leader and teacher quality through, uh, professional learning. Next, we have a lot of information on this screen that I condensed for easier process and reading. Um, if you follow from the left to the right, you'll see our amended budget from FY twenty five is our initial comparison. The preliminary budget, which was presented in work session one, um, around a month ago, where that presentation shows no increases in salaries. The only thing in that presentation from the, uh, work session one was, uh, unfunded mandates for the state, which accounted for about eight million dollars, plus, um, our typical raises. So you have, um, step increases for our salaries, which accounted for about, uh, one point two million dollars. And then it also accounts for the, uh, one point six million dollars decrease in revenue that we have experienced this year. Um, if you move to column, uh, the third column, that was what was presented on five fifteen. And since that date, we have made changes and, and are bringing forth three options, option A, B, and C, uh, for your consideration. The first option, well, I'll go through those options. The first option A, we'll go through this, does show a reduction, um, of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in expenditures. And that's a combination of, um, where we found some salaries and benefits, uh, that had come over from our federal funds in the previous year that are no longer, um, were, were budgeted on accident and had been pulled out. So that's five hundred thousand of that money. We also found another, um, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of expenses to reduce, um, for some efficiency reasons. Option B, um, in our original projection, we had proposed two positions, an E L A coordinator and a truancy specialist, along with, um, changing the allocation for our media specialist to allow more support in our elementary schools. Um, option B keeps those in there, no, it takes those out, those, those three considerations, but it keeps the physician reclasses that we presented previously. Um, with those options taken out, that's an additional one hundred and sixty four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for the savings. Option C is, is in addition to option B, but it takes out all the requested positions. So it takes out the truancy specialist, the E L A coordinator, and it takes out the media specialist, um, allocation change that we presented. So if you look at option A, B, and C, um, I've tried in that dark blue column to demonstrate, to, to describe those changes, um, with the space provided as I could. So, um, yes, sir.
Mr. Bush, just, just to, uh, correct one thing, option B is actually the salary schedules for three percent raises and the two positions.
Yes.
Minus the reclasses.
Yes. We have not, we have not taken out the salary schedules, uh, changes or the three percent increase for certified staff. These are just minor changes in position requests, um, that we had talked about earlier.
If I could jump in, um, one more time, I think this is a good time for board members, uh, to refer back to the board one pager that I provided for you. And as you look at, um, the reduction in option A, up to nine hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, um, that is noted at the bottom of the one pager on the front page, which gives you the specifics, uh, in those spaces to include, like, you know, line by line, the surrender of administrative assistant position of seventy six thousand dollars, decrease in travel costs for the general fund by thirty percent, which is one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, two teaching and learning reductions, uh, in the math adoption and one district and workbooks. You see those associated costs, and as was already mentioned, the, uh, updated salary estimate based on moving staff, and that is five and a half positions, uh, to federal funds. Uh, that's what makes up the nine hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. I wanted to make sure I made note of that, uh, because one of the things we wanted to do is to come back to you with a, with a good faith effort in reference to reducing costs where warranted, uh, as it relates to our budget requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sims. Next, I want to present some new information. That is, uh, well, it's not new, it's a history of, um, the financial activity of our general funds, but it's in a presentation view that we haven't presented, um, recently. But this takes a view of two thousand and sixteen all the way to two thousand and twenty six of what we began our budget season with and where we ended. So if you look at that left column, beginning fund balance, that was our beginning fund balance during the session of our A and L for all of those years listed. We, the, the budget surplus or deficit, which you see many years of the deficit, um, has been budgeted in those years past, leaving us with a budgeted ending fund balance in column three, or column four, actually. And, and, and we also provide in the next column, the fund balance to expense ratio for any of those given years. So as you see, that fund balance to expense ratio has increased over time, even, even though we have budgeted deficits. But the more compelling argument is that those last two columns, where you see that actual ending fund balance and the bun, the, the budgeted amendments or unspent expenses retained by their own fund. So each year, at the end of the year, after the audit, um, we will come back and say, hey, we didn't spend these dollars, we need to add them back to general funds. Over the last ten years, we've added back over eighty nine point eight three dollars of unspent funds. And the tell there is that sometimes those funds are not always, um, things that we just didn't spend. There are cases where the state gave us more revenue, um, where budget amendments would have taken place. But at the end of those ten years, we have, um, returned eighty nine point eight three dollars. My point is here is that although we are looking at kind of an uncertain time, we have made it through these times by adding money back to fund balance that we can't calculate currently. That, that, that number will come in July or August. Um, and it gives us some, some sense of security in saying that we need this money because some of the times those, that, those monies are unspent because people are leaving our district for other opportunities. So one of our efforts to retain our staff is to implement these salary, um, studies. Um, that's why one of our focuses, our main focus is that, is we believe that if we can get those people here compensated correctly, we can retain them longer and they'll be better, you know, it will be better off for them. Um, so I just wanted to provide that history to show you, um, the details over that ten-year period of time. My next slide is an explanation of the changes this year. Um, this shows in that top section, the changes in revenues that we've experienced, including that decrease in equalization of nine million dollars. We did receive increased Q B D funding, which includes the state health benefit factor for our certified employees that they pay for, uh, four point two million dollars. And we got some miscellaneous increases below that totaling a one point five million dollar decrease in revenue. We were passed down through the state and there increases, uh, unfunded mandates of eight point three million dollars. And then the bottom section is, are those direct expenditures that we are asking for this year, including the one-to-one technology, um, expense of three million dollars. Uh, as you move to the sec, option A, B, and C columns, you'll see that that three percent certified, the classified salary study, the amounts associated with those. And then that yellow section are the changes that we've made since the May fifteenth meeting for each option. The rest of the data in this presentation has been presented before. It is, um, information surrounding historical mileage comparisons. Kind of a good slide. Reminding, reminding us that over the last, um, ten, twelve years here, uh, our net increase in revenue is eleven million dollars per year on the tax digestible, um, which is very minimal compared to the increases inflation that we have experienced. And then the last, uh, several slides are those same comparisons against different counties that may be the same size as us, uh, or surrounding. And Kevin, you can move on to these. The, the next, uh, next slide is our next steps. Um, following the, um, board meeting today, we tentatively adopt, we will remain on schedule to have our public hearings in June. If we don't, we will be, um, need to adopt a spending resolution until the budget has been adopted, um, before the June thirtieth period ends. Now, following that, we would, once we get a tax digest information, we will come back to the board for consideration, um, of what that tax digest looks like this year, what increases may be entalented, and how we can adjust the military to, to federal budget. Lastly, here's a calendar of events moving forward, um, for your reference, and that concludes our presentation. Dr. Sims.
Before we conclude the present, the presentation, um, I want to offer a couple of thesis before questions. And if you could go back to the slide that has the options, um, and this is in preparation of me making a recommendation for option A. And I want to refer to the board one pager, uh, that we share with you that's on your, on your desk at this time and make a couple of points. Number one, I want to reiterate that we found a million dollars in reduction to apply to option A. Secondly, I know one of the concerns has been adding positions. However, we've surrendered a coordinator psychology position, which is one position. We surrender administrative assistant position, which is two. In exchange for those positions and in line with our budget priorities, our request is for the K five E L A coordinator and the truancy specialist. So the net result is no additional positions. Thirdly, as it relates to the reductions that we've identified, the reductions far outweigh the requests with the exception of our salary schedule and our raises. The total of all the requests is three hundred seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars compared to reductions of nine hundred seventy three thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. And board, I just, board of education, I just want you to see our effort to account for as best as possible fiscal responsibility and finding reductions, but accounting for our priorities and our right now needs in terms of what I consider to be minimal request at best, at best. Of course, there are other things we feel like we need, but our effort was to prioritize between the May fifteenth board meeting at this time and to come back to you with those priorities that we feel for this time, um, will, will help us to move forward. The last thing I'll refer to on this slide is if you look at the, the deficits, that there is a nominal difference between options A, B, and C, which is why my recommendation is for option A. I believe we do have, uh, after questions, uh, and that's a memo to associate with that. But at this time, thank you for allowing me to, uh, offer some further comments. We will take any questions after four a.m.
Are there any questions? Doctor.
On the, uh, thank you, Mr. Bush, for the presentation. Uh, on the, uh, one pager, the five oh eight, uh, explaining that to me, update Sarah estimate based on staff moving to federal fund, what does that mean?
Yes, sir, uh, if you want, do you want to explain it?
Yeah, I can explain that. Uh, last year in July, after we had passed the budget, we lost all of our school improvement grant funding through the title one program. And so we had to shift a lot of positions that we already had contracts for back to the general fund. But we reduced a lot of those positions, but when we were creating the salary schedule this year, those five positions, five and a half positions remained in my original testings. So now that we're not going to fund them in the general fund, they're going to go back to federal, um, I'm taking them out of our general fund budget. So it's a five hundred and eight thousand dollars of, um, adjustment that we made.
I, I understand what you're saying, but it, it, it doesn't seem to me like that does anything to reduce the overall budget because they're still in it. And, uh, this is just a semantical way of saying it, but they're still there because the money is, uh, still has to be used. I thought you were about to say that before my talk, uh, but that doesn't change the, the figures at all.
Doctor Rogers, are they, uh, do they remain in federal funds this year, or do we take this out completely?
Good morning. Um, for the five positions that are in question, I believe it's three positions were absorbed in their title one budgets. And then two, if I'm not mistaken, um, were positions that they decided to keep without, and I'm talking about at the school base level.
So the title one level is not a part of the basic that we're looking at now?
No, sir.
And see, that needs to be made clear because I'm New Orleans, okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my other question is, uh, on these upgrades, uh, are there new job descriptions from going, from being a director to an executive director that would cause them to, uh, get that type of increase?
Yes, yes, and, uh, you want to address, uh, address the executive director, teaching and learning, in the teaching and learning space? Doctor Lev?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So given our current emphasis on the science of reading and early literacy, what we currently have in our executive director is, um, someone who is serving in various different roles. And so primarily, right now, the role that is being, um, absorbed is, um, pre-K, leadership instructional technology, elementary curriculum assessment, instructional program, early intervention, gifted education, as well as, um, helping with our district coaches. And so that is a heavy lift when we're talking about making sure that literacy remains at the forefront of everything that we do. And so creating, um, the K five coordinator position and also, um, moving into a reclassification for the executive director position allows us to really focus and hone in on that K five literacy approach. The other thing is, with so many of our teachers coming in alternatively certified, we've got to have a way to make sure that we are pouring into them the things that we need to make sure that our teachers are where we need them to be as it relates to literacy. So the science of reading right now is an unf, unfunded mandate that is not going away and we need it. But we also need to wait, make sure that we're well positioned with the right people and that we segmented that out in a way that we can be very deliberate about how we address and attack literacy in our, in our district.
Doctor Lev, can you address the E D four facilities manager, please? And if we can see, uh, since we're on the subject, Mr. Bush, can you address the county clerk to account?
Absolutely.
Can you do that?
Good morning, everyone. So again, I have the position of the director of facilities and maintenance being reclassified to the executive director. And for this position, it's slightly different than what we shared for the previous position. This position has expanded beyond the current scope in terms of the duties and responsibilities of our directors of facility, our director of facilities and maintenance. Some of those things include the development of standard operating procedures, actually, uh, the development of working with our teaching and learning team to enhance our environment. And so we'll see some things, we see some things in terms of the director of facilities and maintenance, uh, developing more, more efficient learning environment. So I'll give you an example, one of the things that we just recently did was the ribbon cutting for our school based health center. Our director of facilities and maintenance was very instrumental in the development of that process. In fact, served as one of the project leads in making sure that we had the proper facilities pieces in place, but also the proper, uh, things in place to support the teaching and learning environment there at Bruce Elementary School. We've also been focusing on process optimization and efficiency gains that has been a, a strategic focus of the position, which is slightly different from the past in which the position has been primarily operational and focused. This has been more so around the strategic leadership. Uh, the executive director also focuses on things such as developing, helping in the development of procedures, regulations, and policies, of course, that we bring in front of the board. Again, those things all represent shifts from what the position has looked like in the past.
Mr. Bush.
Yes, there was a recommendation for a recent reclassification for an accounting position, which are an accounting clerk to an accountant. Uh, that reclassification has come about because this position solely deals with student activity, which is over, uh, about seven million dollars of activity. And not only do they sit in here and, and process payments and requisitions, they are out in our buildings weekly, she is out there, are going weekly, training our staff on how to use our system, how to properly account for those funds. And that could be athletics, theater, on hours, field trips, um, there's a whole, there's about six hundred funds inside of those student activities that this employee deals with. And we need, we were, we were asking for that to be upgraded because of the responsibility and effort associated with that position. Uh, we're not being compensated for that now. Yes, I have.
Good morning. So two pieces that I will address, one is looking at the reclassification of our assist manager to a assistant coordinator. Uh, that was previously approved several years ago, uh, due to, uh, the nature of the candidate coming in, having a lack of experience. Once that experience is built, uh, they're prepared to move from that manager to that coordinator. At the same time, the expectations of that position have increased drastically over the years as the state looks at how they use the data that comes out of our system and bring it into the state system. And so it's an extremely important position to make sure we have it and done right, so that the data we report and ultimately impacts our funding, uh, is done correctly. The second piece that I'll address is with our media clerks. Currently, all of our elementary schools have a, a part time or half-time media clerk. We have several of our elementary schools that are quite large in size, and so the demand of those clerks, I mean, intense and certainly half-time, that transfers, uh, some of those tedious tasks over to our media specialists, which pulls them away from the opportunities to spend time on the literacy front. Uh, and so we feel like it does, some of those schools are still today, we reduce, we're respectful to get a full-time clerk, uh, from eight hundred down to six hundred. Five of our schools have, have to have a full-time clerk, uh, with minimal impacts overall on budget.
So, so what I'm hearing is that, uh, all of the upgrades and what their, their jobs are going to be, uh, they're already doing the jobs. Uh, and I understand that, you know, people need an upgrade. Uh, I, I know when I was, uh, working in the school system, uh, I took on a lot of responsibilities that I didn't get paid for. Uh, and nobody ever, you know, I, I didn't stop doing it because I didn't get an upgrade. Uh, but the point of this budget is that this is an austere budget. And, um, the basic, uh, fiscal policy, uh, is that you don't add when you're in the hole, you try to reduce. And, uh, I, I really have problems with the truancy officer, uh, because I asked on January the sixteenth about a truancy officer. And of course, uh, I was told that we didn't need anyone. And nobody came and said that, uh, we have since found that we need a truancy officer. Uh, but I very seriously asked this question about a truancy officer, we, we didn't need one then. And, uh, there was a statement made in the last, uh, meeting about teacher increases. I don't think that there is a board member here who is not in favor of teacher increases. In fact, I want them to be increased more than three percent. So, uh, to try to spin this as if someone is against, uh, teachers getting an increase, uh, is certainly, uh, the wrong spin. And finally, uh, Mr. Uh, Bush, you said that, uh, that when we look at one line, uh, column, uh, that it sometimes we got additional funds. And my question is, uh, when we get additional funds, uh, do we have to wait to the next budgetary year to find out are there, uh, updates during the year, uh, so that board will know that some funds will come in and that the budget has been adjusted?
Absolutely, every, every time we have a, a major adjustment or increase in funds, we move right before the board to do a budget amendment to include those, uh, those funds. That's, that's one way how we went from, um, around a nine point nine million dollar deficit beginning of twenty twenty five and how we're at a three point four million dollar deficit now because we were, um, the military increase, or when we maintained the mileage increase, that added an additional four point three million dollars. So those adjustments along the year are presented to the board for amendment at various times. Yes.
Are there any questions? Mr. Morton.
Uh, Mr. Bush, the five hundred and eight thousand dollars from the moving to federal funds, is that just for this fiscal year upcoming, or is it continuing?
We would assume it's continuing, and very far in information that we have when we're setting the budget today. Last year, when we set the budget last year, literally, we approved it on June twentieth. And on June twenty fifth or something like that, that's when Doctor Rogers got information from the federal government that we were no longer receiving those funds.
Do we know for sure we would have it, the savings would still be available after the next fiscal year?
It's, um, um, the individuals' employees knew that this would be for one year. And the principals have worked extremely hard to ensure that. And the principals have worked extremely hard to ensure that for those positions that we needed to continue with, that the employees had an opportunity to continue in a different funding source, which was tied in. So, this will not be going back to the general fund.
Right, thank you. Just a general observation. I, Dr. Fidlin, I want to report our employees who are here right now. And they deserve to be paid appropriately. In principle, I have, don't have an issue with the salary schedule or the 3% raise. And as I've said before, I worry about adding fixed costs to this budget that we'll deal with every single year. And I'm glad, Mr. Bush, you included projected fund balance moving forward. You know, this year, it would be with basically any option, 16.2%, 16.3%. However, next year, 7.3%, 7.5%, a year after that, a negative of negative 1.4%. And it is, I understand that there's history that we get more money later on that allows us to deal with these deficits. I can't take anything for granted. And the reality is, where we are right now, we're going to have a reduction in our fund balance regardless. And at the end of the day, how we make that up is by increasing property taxes, either by not owing back the military rate or adding to it. And and I'm glad that we found these additional savings. I wish we had a little bit earlier, quite frankly. And I worry, you know, I asked about fable costs, then now we found some that we can reduce. I just, for me, I don't think it's good fiscal policy to say, well, we saved some money, so now we can spend some. People, when we're about $21 million hole, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And I just, I don't understand why, when you're in the hole, your fund balance is going in negative direction, that you spend more money and bring in new people. Again, reward the people who are here. That's why I suggested a one-time bonus, so that way we would know what we had right now. And what we could do with it, and then with future plan differently. But it's just, let me make sure I have something. Option C includes just the salary schedule and the 3% raise?
That's correct.
But I just, I think it sends a terrible message to say, well, we saved some money, so now we can spend some, that we don't have. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Bush, and all of the contributions you contributed. Thank you, Dr. Simmons, for taking the time to talk with us, to walk us through all of this, to give us an idea of what we're going to look at when we walked in here. I found that very helpful. The one page that we received is most helpful to me because it shows what has happened since our last meeting made when we did not pass a budget. I wasn't there physically, I was there virtually, I was able to hear how the vote went, but I couldn't see all of your reactions and what you were thinking about based on the volume and that kind of thing. So, glad I'm here, but I look at it this way. At the last meeting, there was a proposal that we not basically fund these items here other than the 3% and the salary schedule, which I presume was based on fiscal responsibility. Nobody made the argument that it wasn't based on our strategic plan. It was based on the recommendations of our superintendent, who is in charge of operational matters. It appeared to me that the vote was based on fiscal responsibility. In response to that, Mr. Bush and his team, superintendent have gone back and taken what I add up to be about $315,000 worth of new budget items. And they've come up with almost $1 million, $973,000 worth of cuts, three times the cuts of what that would cost. So, from a fiscal responsibility point of view, you don't have done what we asked you to do. I get the idea of not adding new positions, but at the same time, as superintendent pointed out at the beginning, this would result in a debt, no additional positions, because it gives up two positions. And when we look at what those positions are, and I do have one question. Option B, I know would remove the reclassification of the positions we talked about, would it also remove the five media clerks?
Yes.
I thought, I just wanted to be clear on that. So, as I look at it, as Dr. Fidlin said, I think everybody agrees we should be doing the 3% and the salary schedule, be it by bonus or by salary increase. That doesn't seem to be an issue. So, that leaves us with the $315,000 that we have left, as I said, which has been covered by a $900,000 reduction in other costs. But of that $300,000, let's break that down. The media clerks are $108,000 of that $300,000. My wife's a media specialist, and she's in the high, and she's in a middle school. This does not affect her, so let me be clear on that. But I know the role of the media clerk that she has as a media specialist. I know how vital that role is to a media specialist. And I know when that media specialist, that media specialist does not have a clerk for any number of reasons, how that can affect a media specialist. The more media clerks we can put in the elementary schools who have even, and we're talking about very large, about elementary schools with 600 students, we can change those clerk positions to full-time. That, that goes exactly in line with our concern about literacy. I know personally what it does for the media specialists, allowing them to concentrate on what they need to and have the hurricane concentrate on what they need to. That, to me, absolutely is necessary. If we get the two new positions, which I'll call replacement positions, because that's what they are. They're replacing two other positions. The truancy specialist and the K-5 E.L.A. When we hear about truancy, I think you're right, you asked about truancy earlier. Do you want any more officers on the truancy? And what we're being told now is that this will help that. I've been to the truancy meetings that our district holds. You want to talk about fiscal responsibility? If we have more kids in the classroom, we get more PBE funding. So, from a purely financial point of view, a truancy specialist may pay for himself. More importantly, our job is to educate children. We can't do that if they don't show up. And if the truancy specialist is what the superintendent is telling the meetings, make that happen. And I'm inclined to deal with that. We hire them to make the operational decision. We're in charge of setting the budget. And so I'll look at this, I'll look at it from the point of view of, okay, we had a fiscal concern last time with $300,000. You came back and told us I can cut $900,000 to cover that $300,000. It results in a net $600,000 cut from our last meeting. So, if I'm told the truancy specialist is not paying for that. The K-5 E.L.A. school improvement, more than that. Mr. Bush used the term unfunded literacy mandate. I think that was you or Obama's problem, but before Mr. Smith, I'm going to be talking. At our last school board conference, we were told about the state's efforts to test the literacy, the state requirements of testing for literacy, the state requirements of testing for dyslexia. And that's something that is coming, something that has to happen. And that's something that every district, I guarantee, is not ready for what's going to happen in those tests. We're going to test every kid for dyslexia, for literacy issues, and we're going to find problems. And we're going to have to know how to address those problems. And it's going to require a whole lot more training than our current teachers have. The science of reading is mentioned. And I have learned about this much about the science of reading in the past year because I have a child with a literacy issue. And I take this very personally because even kindergarten, youth one to first grade, this is exactly what I want us to be focused on. How do we get those children that have literacy problems to be able to learn, to not have behavior problems, to not have all these other issues? Superintendent, who we have tasked with improving that, has told us this is what he needs, getting someone new space. And I will tell you straight, I have a personal vested interest in this happening. Take off my father hat, the one I school board member had. I have a very strong concern about our ability to meet the children's needs when this testing is coming up. I'm so glad it's being mandated to test these children for literacy. And I hope and pray that we'll be able to get them what they need when the time comes. The superintendent tells me this is going to be tough to do, so I'm in favor. So, I've got to say, I'm in support of option A. I'm not an expert on all these other criteria, but again, that comes under about $60,000. I'm going to trust the superintendent if he says we need to do it, if he or she has a reason to do it. It might involve $60,000, it could be $900,000, it could be $100,000 for the cuts.
Dr. Yerboyn?
Okay, I've got my notes. And I might take a little time, but please believe it, it's coming from my heart. Yes, yes, I'm glad. Information about the E.L.A. coordinator for K through 5. Our children are struggling to read on grade level, by third grade. We've seen large numbers of children that are still at the beginning level on Georgia milestones, even at the fifth grade level, over and over again. And we can't understand why that's happening. Our youngest children are coming to school all over this district and not ready to learn when they walk into kindergarten. So, therefore, the playing field is never leveled when they start to school. We can only change this trend by doing mandatory pre-K process day, and that would be another unfunded mandate. Now, we have state courts that have added ways to tackle literacy in the state, but they should move ways for years, truly. Historically, back at the Gilford County School District, 30 years ago, I started as an elementary curriculum director in social studies. At that time, we had an elementary and a secondary curriculum director for every discipline. When this building opened up, there was that whole line right there. And the next office was curriculum director. Right now, we have a curriculum director for E.L.A. for grades 6 through 12. But we don't have one person to do the same job at K through 5 with a true battle to lead the leaders. And the addition of that curriculum director would handle that duty and should not be considered a new position. It should be a mandated position. All right, let me talk about truancy. We know that lovely state and Nashville, there are attendance issues. If you keep up with the data that Jamie Cassidy gives us each month, you will know that last month, 27.9% of our students have incurred 10% or more absences this year. And that's just the average. If you look at the high school levels, they're even more alarming. And we know that we cannot teach them, we turn off the seats. There are new laws that been championed by our state Senator John Kennedy, just signed into law to give us ways to attack attendance in the state. And they're going to require our schools and district to come up with programs for each school and district to attack this issue. And I'm sure Jamie Cassidy loses sleep at night over that new mandate. While our schools are struggling to keep the focus on learning, the issue requires some different tactics to determine the barriers that are keeping our children away from our schools. The addition of a truancy officer who doesn't just work eight times, that can visit schools at night, find out what those barriers are to those children coming to school, can certainly help us get in this case. So, I would certainly support option A.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Fidlin?
Thank you, ma'am. Do you, could you tell me how much money is in this budget for athletic stipends? I know we used to do a percentage, and I think it was changed when Ms. Evans was the athletic director. And now there is a stipend that I understand that athletic coaches get. Is that, what is that numbing this budget?
I do not know that right off the top of my head. It is built into the salary and benefit line, but I would have to get you into detail on what that is specifically.
We've, and I've heard for years and years, educators and other persons are very good at justifying what they want. And we all can justify what we think is going to change things in this system. I've been studying what had gone on in the last years before I arrived here. There were positions added because they were supposed to change things. There were things reconfigured because they were supposed to change things. And educators all over the country are really good at justifying what they want. But, and all of that is good and well. But this is not about justifying what is needed and what we want to have. This is a money issue, and this is a dollar issue. We don't have additional money. We are in the hole, $21 million. And a general fiscal responsible tactic is that you don't add when you're already in the hole. And I know all these glory, justifications of what is needed are good. And I really support a lot of them. But as a person who looks at the bottom line, even grandma knows that she can't go to the store and buy what she don't have money at. And I think that we need to be prudent enough to know that if our budget is in the hole, we don't need to add anything else to it. And I just hope and pray that we'll come to that end. And from these three options that are given, I think that C would be the most prudent one to go with at this time. But as I said earlier, this is a budgetary matter. It's not a justification of what we need and what we don't have. It's about the money, and right now, we don't have it.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank the superintendent and Mr. Bush and other staff members. We were doing what efforts and making the changes in the 25, 26 budget. But Dr. Yerboyn makes the notes, too. I don't want to forget what I wanted to say about that A that I'll forget, because I'll write it down. And I won't repeat what the others have said about truancy and the E.D. for the, K-5 E.L.A.'s coordinator, and the E.D. for the media clerks. I already heard that, and it's going to sound important. I want you to know that your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and that we are very appreciative of your efforts. As you already know, as board president, I support this budget. I'm supporting option A. Our children, parents, teachers, staff, and the entire community are depending on us as board members to do the right thing by this school district. That's why we're here. As you know, so goes the school district, so goes the community. Our public schools are the heart of our society. We could see very clearly this week at our school board, our school districts' graduations, the success of our spirits. It was such a hard self-experience to witness our strategic plan for this school district come alive by the many students who have discovered their four main icons for their life. Matched and enrolled, motivated to enlist, molded for entrepreneurship, or meaningfully employed. Every student in every class have a plan for their life. And that lets me know that I was
And that lets me know that our strategic plan is working. It is credit to how well this superintendent, staff, teachers, and parents have prepared our students. We are beginning to see a bright future in our students. Our constituents voted us in to be in this space for the school board for this reason. I believe that we would be neglecting our duties as school board members if we fail to provide the needs of our students by providing for them a first-class education. We can do this. We must save our students. Our community is expecting this of us. No longer will we be able to continue to have a federal school district by denying our history of what it needs. I received an email from one of our parents, and I sent that email to you, so you could read it. The parent was in support of the proposed budget. And I will read to you what the parent said. I'm quoting, "I know how vital competitive pay is to keep our teachers. Our school district is the foundation of which our community rests. A small minute rate, a small minute rate increase could generate millions more to fund a five percent or greater base rate while costing most homeowners like myself just a few extra dollars per month." That email helped me to believe that our community wants to verify our students and that they are willing to finance it. If we don't finance our students and be a kind, what will do it for us? I have faith in our community. I've been in this community over fifty years, and this community hasn't let me down yet. I believe they want to see a striving school district for our students. Our students deserve this. They are our children, these are our children, and we want to protect them, and we want to educate them."
Thank you, Dr. Yerwood. Thank you. Mr. Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Bush, for your report, and Dr. Sims for all the work put into this. I've shared my concerns at last meeting, and I still have those same concerns. I, I truly believe our teachers need a three percent increase, and also salaries. I have no, no problem with that at all. Any new money, though, does concern me. And if we're doing new money, I'd rather put it at the school level than down here downtown. I mean, that's a big concern for me. I think some of this stuff can, really at the school level with the people we have in charge, if we have the right people, which I'm sure we do, a lot of this can be taken care of. I, I, I support our teachers, I support what we're doing in the classrooms. I did have concerns. I know at one of our meetings early on, we had a report that thirty percent of our senior class were beginning learners. I hadn't heard no more about that. I'm not sure where we at now. I certainly hope that's not the case, but according to that testing that was done at that time, the report does came back. I just think that, you know, if we're spending money, and I, I certainly don't want to spend any new money, but if we're spending money, it really is a bit school love. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Dr. Woodford.
Comment, not question. Now, you share this with the superintendent on this. I don't have it, it's been prepared, or I may not be able to express as eloquently as some of the board members around this area. But I want to share my heartfelt expression. I work in the communities and in some of the schools. I see the children, I see the teachers, I see the administrators, and I think that all of them have big intentions and are doing the best that they can. That said, we have a responsibility this way as a government team. And part of that is with the, our, you share responsibility. Just looking at the numbers, I cannot at this time support the proposed budget. And it's because I do not feel at this time we are in a position to have these new positions. And I know that superintendent and teams have been a hard job pulling this together for us, and I appreciate it. I would rather have seen they wore what I call student-centric budget, where there's more money in the classroom, where that be an increase in future pay. And I always want to care professionals in some of our underperformance schools, because I see and I think it's needed. And just those other programmatic supporting tools for literacy is very dangerous. So again, I, I haven't seen or heard anything today that would have swayed my vote. So at this time, I cannot support the proposed budget.
Dr. Sims.
I want to make sure I address a couple of things I think are misunderstandings. There is no new money. We've, we filed nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars in reductions. With the exception of the salary schedules and the raises, we're asking for three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Mathematically, that is not new money. If I was asking for something over and above what was original from the first work session, which I just did the math, on May the fifteenth, the budget was two hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty, twenty-eight-nine million, two hundred eighty thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. We're coming back today with option A, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred seven, twenty-eight-eight million, three hundred seven thousand, four hundred, which is a difference of a negative nine hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. So, so we're not asking for any new money. We're actually asking for less money. And, and I hope that we're able to see that, that we're asking for less money and not new money. There are also, we can call them new positions and understand the concern, but I need, we need a K five ELA coordinator in teaching and learning, more than we need an administrative assistant in teaching and learning. So it is a replacement, and it's well in line with our strategic plan. So I understand the concern about new positions, but this is a new position we're asking for the direct support of our strategic plan. And I would, I would say it's largely student-centric, because we are talking about K five literacy and coordinating all efforts that happen directly inside the classroom. There's any position that's going to support the classrooms is that. We need a truancy specialist, more than we need a coordinator of psychology, which is why, as opposed to bringing an added position, we're replacing that position as well. I made my best effort to be budget neutral, and in our best efforts to be budget neutral, we overdid it. And again, came to this table with a difference from May fifteenth to today of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred twenty dollars in the reverse. As far as our resources are concerned, I, I can't think of a space in our district where we are not bleeding resources in the classrooms. Many of there are times that our teachers have requests, we, we have those being accommodated through our federal dollars and our general fund dollars. Resources, I've, I've said it a million times, often hold up my hands, and on one hand, I hold up the incredible resources that we have that are student-centered. And our biggest issue is not having a student, a student-centered budget. It is making sure that we connect people, our students, our community, otherwise, to connect those to the resources that we have. We, we, we are, we have what we need, and our effort is to connect those pieces. So there's anything we're going to continue to do is make sure that we are student-centered in our budgeting processes. Which is why, as I think about what best position do I need right now? It is those two, for what I already mentioned. And I, I would argue, we actually do need more, but in demonstrating fiscal responsibility, this is why we come to the table with what I consider to be very modest, but meaningful asks. And if we are not able to replace a position with another position that, in direct support of our strategic plan, then it stifles our ability to implement the strategic plan in terms of the truancy specialist. Another position, as we think about one of our most critical areas, and that is chronic absenteeism, we want to go after that. And that will help us to go after that. Literacy, we want to go after that, and the K five ELA coordinator will help us go after that, more than a coordinator of psychology, because we have someone who's capable to take care of the coordination of that in addition to student services. We recognize that. We really want to go after those pieces. But the biggest point I want to make is, we have not asked for new money above and beyond what I think everybody agrees on, and that is salary schedules and raises. No new money. We've not added one position. We've come, we've actually, we've actually gone to the negative because we subtracted five and a half positions through the federal funding, in addition to a balance of the two positions that we surrendered in exchange for two more. I would understand the argument that I was adding two over and above, but we're not adding two over and above. I'm humbly asking to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars for that much more investment in what we need to do for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'm guaranteed to be here only through 2028. So for me to kick a can down the road in terms of what I see as your superintendent, our needs, is me deferring a whole year of my employment here. And I'm not, I, I, that makes me uncomfortable. I don't want to wait in terms of the work that we do on a daily basis to account for what we need right now. And what I present to you is a right-now needs-based budget. And again, that is modest, and one that is, and I want to thank my team, because without me even consulting them, they've got to work and started asking the question, if we say these are our needs, what are we willing to surrender in exchange for those needs? And they far exceeded the expectation to account for those. So I just wanted to make that point. We worked hard on this, and I would not be on this microphone if I felt like we didn't put in the work, the time, the effort to bring to you the Board of Education a recommendation that will account for the priorities that I set forth to you in March, and something that I felt was modest, but at the same time meaningful, in response to what we need as a district. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments?
This is not on the budget file, but I just wanted to know, are there any preliminary reports on the milestone test?
Those results are embargoed, we're not able to discuss those at this time.
Mr. Freeman.
I have a rhetorical question for my board members that are not in support of this asset now. That is, had option, had the amendment passed in our last board meeting, would you have voted for that budget? If your answer is yes, option A is now budgeted six hundred thousand dollars. If your problem with the positions of truancy and ELA, K five ELA, are that you don't want more positions, then my rhetorical question would be, how many positions would you ask our superintendent to get rid of to add those two positions? He's telling you he's got to have five to add two. He's asking for three hundred thousand by reducing nine hundred thousand. So I'm at a loss as to what amount of money that's going to have to reduce from the budget to get the three hundred thousand thousand. And what number of positions does he have to remove that are not needed to get the two positions he thinks are needed? I just ask you to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And certainly, I understand the kind of sentiments that go into supporting what you've outlined. And your question is a rhetorical question, but it is a question that needs some clarification. And of course, when you talk about positions being eliminated, these were teacher positions. There is a criticism that we are top-headed. So to answer your question, if he could eliminate some of the top-headed positions, I think that it puts us in a better position to be able to go ahead with what you want to add.
Thank you. I just, first of all, I have one question. In terms of the technology outlay for laptops on supply eleven, is that something that could be spent out of SLOST? Or does that have to come out of general fund?
That's a great question. The reason it's in our budget is because this SLOST is in November. We can't budget for items, and our current SLOST are those future dollars. So it's got to be in our general funds, budgeted for that purpose. Until we, until that vote passes, our, our PLS in November, the general fund, it's, it's the general fund's obligation to provide those laptops to those students, but that was a decision a district board would make. And those are dollars right back in the budget. That's three million dollars of student support.
Thank you. You bet that helps with that question. The other thing, I just, again, like Dr. Woodford, I do not have a prepared statement, but we had graduations. We've had five graduations over the last two days. And in my, this is my fifth set of graduations. And the improvement in the preparedness of our students is evident in all of the classes showing a one-hundred percent for me choice. We were doing the right things, the strategic plan is being implemented, and the right things are happening for the right reasons. When my daughter graduated Rutland High School in 2016, there were three honor graduates, three. She was one of them. Yesterday, there were sixty-seven honor graduates, over a quarter of the class. I think Northeast doubled their honor graduates in one year. These kids are learning, they're doing, they're getting prepared, they're doing the right things. And it is up to us as fiscal stewards of this community to continue to make the right things happen. And I ask that, you know, with this, what, three hundred thousand and change, that we not tank the entire budget. Okay, if we have to go with option C, I would prefer not to, I would prefer option A. But, you know, is, anyway, I, we're doing the right things, the right things are happening, and we need to continue to let the right things happen. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
I just wanted to address one thing, Dr. Fittler, before we step out. The two positions eliminated, administrative assistant, Dr. Sims, did you correct? Administrative assistant was under Jamie Cassidy, a district position, is that correct?
No, it's under teaching and learning.
Is that at district level?
Yes.
And the coordinator of psychological services that was eliminated, that district position?
Yes.
So two district positions would be replaced with two different positions, is that correct?
Correct, and actually, two, two positions that will be much more on the ground, much more in support of what's happening in the classrooms, much more out of the district and not in the office, working in that space, which is why these are so critical, critical replacements.
One member, if I just, I just hope y'all take that in mind, we take the two district-level positions. Well, remember, I just, I just hope y'all take that in mind, we're taking two district-level positions and putting two better district positions to address the gap we need to have.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, and listening to you and to all the board members. My mind has really been wandering. That has been on my mind very well. Something we should short-change our students over three hundred thousand dollars. Most of them are more than a right amount. Are we saying our students are not worth it? Help me to understand why our children is not like this. That's the message I'm hearing, that we don't believe in our students. We don't believe in our staff. We don't believe in our teachers. And we're not going to help them. I just see our role here to help them. To help them, to help our students. As I said earlier, our students are demonstrating to us that this strategic plan is what happened. If you witnessed the graduation, you saw it. You saw the progress. And the progress will continue. The progress will continue. But it won't continue if we don't provide for this district what this district needs. I'm pleading with you. I'm pleading with you. I've had children graduate from this school district. I'm pleading with you to give our children what they need to be successful in life. Too many times, we complaining about what the children are not doing. What they are not doing, the trouble they get into, all the things that they do and they don't do. It's our time now to help them. To help them to progress. And I believe that we are headed in the right direction for our students. Let's not hold them back. Let's not hold them back over a few hundred thousand dollars just to drop them a blanket. Thank you.
Dr. Sims?
One final statement. I want to drop on the point. I've given up. We've given up three times more than what we're asking based on our priorities. And we're willing to do that. And we just plead with you to support us in giving up three times more than what we're requesting.
Mr. Freeman, I'm sorry. I had to leave at an opportune time that you were making whatever comments you made, but I'm sure they were well-placed. And of course, certainly from what I've heard since I've been back. And I understand, and I think that especially what Chairman Hammond said about seeing the progress of the student. I think we all want the students to progress. We all encourage our students every day to be the best that they can be. And that is within all of us as a part of us. But our responsibility is to be fiscally responsible. And fiscal responsibility does not include, this is a principle that is involved here. If you're in the hole, you don't buy anymore. You try to reduce what's already in the cards because we're in the hole. And that's a principle. And I understand all of these other kinds of passionate pleas. And certainly, I could make them myself. But I think that more than anything, that's our community, it looks to us to be good students of the funds that we have and stick to certain principles that we should be guided by.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. And I don't question the motivation of any member of this board. I know all of you individuals, and I know everyone in the board so special. I just have a difference of opinion as to how we see on this particular issue. And my response to what you asked for about being top-heavy and getting rid of features in place of these positions. What I pointed out was that the two positions, administrative assistant position and coordinator of psychological services, are two district-level positions. And we are replacing, or what is being proposed, is to replace those two district-level positions with two district-level positions that are better tuned to our needs in literacy and truancy and are needed more than those district-level positions on psychology and administrative assistance. So I was just trying to point out that, say, we're too top-heavy, get rid of too top-heavy positions. He did. You asked him to be fiscally responsible. He did. He will be triple the act with the reduction. So that's what I wanted to point out. I understand the principle, and I think he is met the principle. I think we may have given clear what the principle was to make. And I believe this is the response, a bit more than answer.
And thank you so much, but I beg to just say that the positions that you pointed out are being done, they are not filled. They were proposed positions. Top-heavy means that you have people already in place in a position that makes the top head. A proposal cannot cause the top to be head. We don't have a psychological person now that's being eliminated.
Which opens the, I don't want to argue about the same. If you have a position that is budgeted, it's a position for, and if you don't fill it, and instead you put this other person in this position, that's it.
Are there any additional questions or comments? We have a recommendation for budget option A. Is there a motion to approve budget option A? Additional questions or comments? All in favor of budget option A, please state by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion fails.
Can we move to option B?
Please specify which one.
Option B would be the salary schedule, the three percent raise and two position. Those being the K-five E L A coordinator and the truancy specialist.
I move to pass option B. And I would propose an amendment to that, that we include the five media clerk positions. So my motion would be for option B with the five media clerk positions.
Questions? Comments? All those in favor of option B, please state by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
Nay.
In that case, I would make a motion that we approve option B without mine. Would be the salary schedule of three percent raises and truancy specialist and K-five E L A coordinator without any reclassifications would be for options. That's my motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Make a motion to approve option C?
Aye.
Which would be removing all of the reclassified positions, media clerks and the truancy specialist and K-five E L A.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor of option C, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Option C, let's see, if I counted correctly, we have seven in favor and one opposed. Is that correct? All right, option C passes.